I'd like to call the City of Taft Planning Commission regular meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, November third, two thousand and twenty. We are at the City Hall Council Chambers, two oh nine East Kern Street, Taft, California, nine three two six eight. Effective June twenty second, two thousand and twenty one. Planning Commission meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are also being livestreamed at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot youtube dot com forward slash user forward slash City of Taft. Masks are required to be worn by all attendees. Public comment can be made in person and can also be received per the following. Written comments may come, may be dropped off in the Dropbox in front of City Hall. Comments may be an email to the city clerk at Y Mayfield at City of Taft dot org. Made by phone to the city clerk's office at six six one seven six three one two two two. And public comments not made in person will be accepted up to one hour before the meeting. Any comments received will be read into the record. This is our regularly scheduled meeting. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Mr. Lightcom?
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight we'll have an invocation by Mr. Stephen McDaniel.
Father, we're so grateful to be here today. Thank you, God, for your blessing upon the city. We thank you, Lord, for your blessing upon this council. We pray for your anointing, for your guidance, for your direction. Lord, and we pray that you would continue to bless the city, bless this commission in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, we're on to a roll call.
Chairman Orrin.
Barely, yes.
Vice Chair Livingston.
Here.
Commissioner Dowden.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Lightcom.
Here.
Item number one is citizens' requests, public comments. Comments are to be received as stated in the above policy. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the commission on matters within its jurisdiction. State law prohibits the commission from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. Commission may receive, comment, and set the matter for a subsequent meeting. Please limit comments to five minutes. Do we have anybody that we need to read into the record or has made comments? Okay, that dispenses with item one. Item number two is the October sixth, two thousand and twenty one regular meeting. The approval of the minutes, recommendation is we approve them as submitted.
Motion to approve minutes as submitted?
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. This is a roll call vote.
Vice Chair Livingston.
Here.
Commissioner Lightcom.
Yes.
Commissioner Dowden.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commiss- Chairman Orrin.
Yes, that is approved on a five zero. Item three on the agenda, Planning Commission review zoning ordinance amendment to comply with Senate Bill Nine, duplexes in the R one zone. We have a mis- a recommendation from Mr. Staples.
Thank you, Chairman Orrin. Right now, this is just a information-only item, but will definitely become a zoning ordinance amendment that will become, come before you in a future meeting probably soon. But this is related to, you know, the myriad of bills that get signed every year by the state. Dozens of them are related to housing, and this one in particular really created a lot of turmoil throughout the state despite whatever optimism you may have read. So it's Senate Bill Nine, signed this year, so I'm going to give a summary here of the bill and bring up some issues and how we try to integrate it into our zoning code, even though, as you saw the title before, kind of simplify duplexes in the R one zone, little more, has more issues than that involved with it. So the governor signed it on September sixteenth, is kind of on the early end of his signatures. The technicality part of it, amends section sixty six five four two and adds section sixty five A five two point twenty one and sixty six four eleven point seven of the government code. It was authored by Senator, or Senate President Pro Tempore Atkins. She is out of the San Diego region, Senate District thirty nine. I'm not singling her out because of what is involved with it. One thing I've always told people when you see bills, see who authored it, because sometimes they try to solve a local issue by having a statewide bill in it. We have over four hundred unique cities and fifty-plus counties, and it's kind of, it's some things don't quite fit in trying to solve whatever issue may come up. If it's probably what should have been a local initiative, gets the Senate, a senator's ears, and then it becomes a bill that ends up on the state level. So anytime you see other bills that you may or may not agree with, see who authored it, see if it might be something unique to a Central Valley in L.A., Sacramento, whatever, and that might give you some insight on why they proposed it. So it seems simple enough in that Senate Bill Nine is trying to require, and is requiring now that it's signed, the ministerial approval of up to two units on all single-family residentially zoned lots. This approval also applies because they put both of these items in this one bill of the two units, and then what they're referring to is urban lot splits, where you take a single-family lot and split it. I'll get into the details of it in a little bit. So these regulations, the technical language in the bill says urban, it applies to urbanized areas and urban clusters, and urban clusters per the census is any incorporated city of twenty-five-hundred people or more. So that's most of the four hundred cities and fifty-plus counties in the state. And then one kind of good spot is if we do get some extra units in, when we do our yearly reporting in the housing element, at least we'll look like we have some progress towards meeting the RENA number, which we'll be getting into when we get into the housing element preparation starting next year. More details on the new regulations, the lot that would either have the two units or the lot split can't be in any of these sensitive areas, so prime farmland, wetlands, high-fire zones, hazardous sites, earthquake sites, floodplains, land conservation areas, protected habitats, or be a historic landmark district or property. The language is kind of odd in that it's talking about, it does talk about prohibiting or the lot that would utilize either the two units or the lot split can't involve demolition of rent-restricted housing or twenty-five percent of exterior walls of an existing structure unless the site hasn't been occupied for three years. That could be tied to weird housing laws that are in some of the urban areas, because they do so many things with rent control and things like that, where there might be enough areas where this best, specific line item has to be in there, but it's there. But we do have some ability to impose objective zoning, subdivision, design review standards, but ministerial means it would never come before you or the council. It stays on the staff level. So a design review, a building permit, that level of review, no discretion by a planning commission or city council. And this but part of but cannot use the standards to preclude duplexes. It's the old term of exclusionary zoning, where it looks like you have all these metrics that allow something to happen, but once you apply it to your area, that you find no properties that applies to. So the development standards that it outlines, two units per lot, and I put R one zone, it always says single-family zone. Each of those two units must be at least eight hundred square feet. The side and rear setbacks for these need to be allowed to be at least as close as four feet. This has shown up before in the dozens of accessory dwelling unit bills that have come up, because most cities, and includes us as well, the backyard area, the side and rear setbacks for structures tends to be five feet. They're trying to push it closer to four. Part of that could be because of trying to add something like this to an existing single family. You might have adjacency issues with the existing single family, and providing additional foot here and there, you might be able to squeeze that second unit in. They're trying to get most of the state to stop requiring as many parking units per residential unit, so we can only require up to one space per unit, so two spaces total for the two units. Prohibiting rentals of the units for less than thirty days. This is statewide, where cities feel they're having a residential, residential rental issue with the online apps. They're trying to make it more, I guess, towards the hotels or, or more residential side, so they have to be for thirty days or more to prohibit the short stays. One thing is how we work this into our own development standards. Once you have the two units, we can have a standard that says, well, you can't add an accessory dwelling unit anymore. So you have your two units duplex, whatever you want to call it, but you can't add any more based on the prior ADU laws, and we'll get into that some more as well. On the lot split standards, when you split it, you can't make the smaller of the two less than forty percent of the original size. If you already have small lots, the smallest one can't be smaller than twelve hundred square feet. So we don't have to set a standard where we have allowances of twelve hundred. It's just if somebody takes the standard lot here, it's a max sixty forty split, but it's more of just split it right in half is what they're trying to push on this. It still needs to conform with the subdivision map act standards, so they still have to have a surveyor and all the processes that are involved with preparing the proper documents for recordation with the county. Easements and other right-of-way dedications, different summaries I've read, the right-of-way part is kind of, I'm not sure if we're really allowed to implement that in areas where it may not be there. I haven't noticed too many areas that don't have the full right-of-way in place where this could be applied, so that won't be an issue. But the easements for utilities and other things, we can set standards where if a unique situation requires those to be recorded with the split as well. And if they get a certified land surveyor, that person should be able to guide them through the process where something like that would be needed. Then they get into some odd things about timing of things, using these lot split standards, you can't do it from a prior urban lot split, so if you do it once, you can't keep going smaller, I guess. The lot, you're trying to do a lot split, if the property owner did it to an adjacent property previously, he can't, he or she can't do it to the one they're trying to do it on, so I don't know if that creates a checkerboard pattern. Don't know on that. And in some cities, they get so specific where they can have some standards related to how long the owner is required to occupy one of the two units. So we, and we can put it in there, but it'd be no more than five years. We can, it, it can somewhat curtail too much of this happening, and maybe it does mess, whatever it is. There's no reasoning described in the bill on this, but we can set some resident occupancy standards related to the two units and the lot split. All right, so I've seen confused faces as I've gone through things, because you're probably all trying to visualize how some of our properties can do this. The other problem we have is we haven't been changing our code every year, as every year the legislature's been doing all these accessory dwelling unit changes. So they've passed literally dozens of various laws of dealing with that setback, the size of the unit, and various things, but one thing to note is the SB nine law never uses the technical term duplex. It always says two units.
We're doing a lot split, right?
No, just a, in, okay, I'll pause here where what the bill's really trying to do is to get every possible single-family lot split in half and put two units on each. So go from, I guess you could say your traditional single unit, single-family home with a garage, and get four out of that property.
Okay.
That's, it, they want the maximum production out of utilizing this bill. But it never uses the term duplex, and you could, and it always says two units, and then it says cannot be less than eight hundred square feet. But the ADU laws that have been passed, they've been trying to push all these micro-unit type things, so it might even be lower than a hundred and twenty square feet now. I think they gave us discretion on this, because when we passed our last series of accessory dwelling unit standards, we only went as low as two twenty for a separate unit. Anything that's created within an existing dwelling, it could be a bedroom or whatever it may be, but when it's a brand-new unit that's added, attached or detached, we went down to two twenty. So now which one gets the priority? Do we, how, the, the tough part is going to be, how do we rewrite our residential section to allow all the ADU units that the prior laws are asking for? But now they say nothing could be lower than eight hundred square feet, but what happens to any kind of small unit, studio, one bedroom, or any other variation between the hundred and twenty and seven hundred ninety-nine square feet? So.
I think they're saying one or the other.
Right. So the potential resolution is, the quick summary of this is to list everything, and then it's up to the property owner to figure out what they're wanting to do. So they, so single-family residential uses are not prohibited by this bill, so someone who has a standard, single-family lot could still do the one unit and a garage, call it a day. But we need to figure out how to create variations of two units. So single-family plus an accessory dwelling unit is two units. But if you do a five-hundred-square-foot studio that's a separate structure in the back, or a two-story on an existing garage, are we now conflicting with the law that just got passed, or?
Yeah, is there?
Or does it get labeled as ADU, so it's good, or?
Is there a size limit on the ADU?
No, the only thing was they kept changing the law where the smallest allowed habitable space, for the longest time was actually all the way down to a hundred and twenty square feet, which was, I think, a building code standard, but I think they've pushed it down to, I think, as small as seventy square feet.
Wow. This is, it seems to me like what you're getting at is, this is still a lot split. If you do a single-family and an ADU and a accessory dwelling unit?
Yes.
On your lot, you're fine.
You're fine, and that's where the bill does nothing to address the prior ADU bills, because that eight hundred square feet is very, it stands out in the law.
But my point is that that's in a lot split. You have to do the lot split, right?
No.
No. Because they're talking about.
So a vacant fifty by a hundred and twenty-five-foot lot here in the R one zone on this western part of the city to the airport addition and everything west of tenth.
Well, we got a lot of.
You got a vacant lot, fifty by one twenty-five, you could just put a duplex.
We've got a lot of twenty-fives by one twenty-fives, too.
Yeah. Uh, yeah. Yes.
So if I take a twenty-five by one twenty-five and split it in two with a lot split now, I have two lots that I can build SFRs on, and each of those could then have an ADU.
Yes. So I think what you're confusing is a statement I made a minute ago, is the desire by the author and the co-signers on the bill, they would like every single lot to be split in half, two units on each. That's what the ultimate goal is, but if, when you read the bill language, it doesn't necessarily prohibit all the smaller options, which is just single-family, single-family plus ADU, two lot, uh, two units on one, one on the other. You know, every variation should be allowed. The tough part's going to be, how do you write it into the code that makes it easier? Because we're going to get more your neighborhood developer, not your home builder production doing thousands of units a year. It's more of somebody who's proficient in building a house now may want to be utilizing this. How do we guide them to this ministerial process is going to be the thing. So, but the part is dealing with the size and shape of the lot, and what do you refer to the first unit, the second unit? How big can it be? How small can it be? There's a lot of conflicts there, so.
I have one question, Mark.
Yeah.
I, I believe on the two slides previous, one of the, one of the items was that the lot can be as small as twelve hundred square feet.
That's correct.
So you put an eight-hundred-square-foot house on a twelve-hundred-square-foot lot?
Well, what I'm saying is there are a lot of lots, not necessarily here in Taft, but other communities, that are down at twenty by one hundred and twenty-five by one hundred. So I, I see the, I see the logic there.
Yeah, so.
But for us, our, our smallest, oh my God.
So that's.
The one twenty by.
So what you're starting to get on is detail I do not have on this presentation.
Yeah.
That's where it's going to be multiple, and I do have, so there is a unofficial draft ordinance change in your staff report. It's nowhere near complete because of a lot of these conflicts and me trying to figure out what adjustments can we do to accommodate the variations, if you will. Plus, this really brings out some nuance in development standards for single-family, duplex, two-unit, whatever you want to call it, and then with the parking standards and other pieces, there's a lot of little pieces that have to be adjusted that can allow most of what they want to do, but I think nothing prior, the way I'm reading is nothing, it's not prohibiting other things, but I don't know how or if we'd be violating the bill if the second unit or the smaller unit or either unit is smaller than eight hundred square feet. But let me, let me get through the presentation, we'll get to the end, and we'll.
Yeah, there's.
Roundtable on this. So, okay, so beyond this. Okay, so one thing that would somewhat naturally hold up too much of this happening all at once is existing single-family properties would be difficult to convert to a duplex. A lot, or many of them already occupy so much of the lot, and there's not much in the rear, they could maybe do some sort of adjacent thing and add eight hundred square feet, but it definitely would help hurt or make difficult for the lot split, because a line that would leave the smaller half, essentially forty percent of the original, would still be going right through a structure which would violate the building code. So there's kind of a natural feature with existing homes. We have plenty that are small, maybe there's room in the back to chop a property in half, but that forty percent does most. That forty percent does, most properties wouldn't be able to do that, they'd have to modify the existing single family home to get the second unit. So there's that little limitation, and then. An individual property owner wanting to go through that. Process, not, wouldn't be the easiest thing to do. And then, uh, this is what I was getting at, is that the development standards. Probably should just be written out where it has all the variations where it accommodates the existing single family. And vacant lots in the variations of one, two, two and one, and two and two. Um, units on a lot, going through this whole process. And hopefully we could uh, fold this into the zoning ordinance we're doing as part of the downtown plan. Cause the zoning ordinance is more about the citywide zoning code, less about the downtown area, so. Uh, so, I've cut and paste just the residential portion of the table that's in your staff report of the different units, so. We may need to go the direction of maybe referring less. To single family, as single family is maybe more one unit, less about duplex and more calling it a two unit dwelling. And then anywhere where the single family uh. Uh, building is allowed, it would be allowed in the uh, similar zone for two units, so. The RS is your um, uh, rural lot, large lot acre, larger, your R one, R two. And one thing I was um. Working on, and you'll see in the next slide, and it's in the draft ordinance you have. Is allowing a two unit, maybe on a small lot in a R three, which is intended to be. A more dense multifamily, but if you attend or uh, tune into any of the workshops we're doing. To create the variation of, or to reach the density that R three calls for. There could be variations of, it's something that's real small, but technically meets the high density. Situation in R three, so allowing a two dwelling unit, and then maybe allowing uh. A s- uh, small house as single family on a small lot in the R three, could be something we consider. Cause if it's, the lot is small enough and the house is small enough, but it's still mathematically a twenty-nine per unit. Or uh, units per acre type setup, it would be complying with the R three zone. So, we'll go over those details later, it's, it's a math problem. So this is where I'm talking about here, where we did any kind of single family or duplex allowance. If it squeezed onto a three thousand square foot lot, this comes from. When you do twenty-nine units per acre, you do the math. I think it comes out around fourteen hundred something square feet. Times two, to make sure there's at least two units on the lot, and rounding up a little bit, you get to three thousand square feet. Same thing with the R two zone, which allows fifteen units per acre, two units on five thousand square feet. Gets you this density, because we're trying to reach this potential, if you will. Maxing out, maxing out every property where a multifamily builds, this is what a small lot variation of that would be. Nine thousand is encouraging a triplex, twelve thousand is encouraging eight units.
Wouldn't this naturally increase the number of available lots for development that we have to report in the um. Housing element?
Yes, that's a whole other story and discussion of what they're doing with the reporting side, uh, but. This was already s- a little bit of something we were gonna be discussing with the workshops on the downtown specific plan. What kind of small lot, cause we have some existing examples in town. You know, would you like to see more of that, or at least that's still allowing that on some of the numbered streets to continue the little cottages that face.
Bungalow.
Third, fourth, fifth, sixth, so. Um, and then. Started working on some of the side lot stuff, but any of this uh, five foot side yards, we'd adjust to that four foot standard I mentioned earlier. They're trying to get the structures as close to the property lines, which can separate it from another building, or if they are attached and they just need the space. The four feet still also uh, meets building code standards where um, additional firewall or uh. Uh, or hourly protection of the firewall from increasing. Uh, that's why they're pushing it to four, because it doesn't quite reach the threshold where you need to basically have a block wall, if you're too close to the property line. So we're gonna have to deal with some of the numbers side of it when we figure out what we're. Or what you and the, the city are okay with, in trying to comply with the Senate bill on it. So I, um, we already went over the accessory dwelling units, these are the standards we have, where essentially. Our standard lots in town are mostly under the seventy-five hundred square foot, square feet. Uh, we could work on this as well to adjust the square footages where we can allow more square feet on accessory dwelling units if we want. On our standard lots, the, the limit on ADU square footage is twelve hundred square feet on that unit, and that's the state law. But we did these thresholds, we went through our discussions a couple of years ago, we could do it again to. If you see uh, our standard lots are pretty much citywide, that are sixty-two hundred to seven thousand square feet. If we'd wanna give a little more space for a, a smaller ADU. Or whatever threshold you wanna set, like this could bump up to twelve hundred square feet. You know, could do smaller on smaller lots, that would be more proportional to um, the existing dwelling on that ya- lot, so. This is one section that would definitely, or most likely is gonna change in the near future, so that's something we'll have to. Figure out as well. So with that, I know I created a lot of questions of.
Can, can you go back one slide?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm, I'm thinking on this. Five hundred square feet on lots up to seven thousand. Four hundred ninety-nine, so seventy-five hundred foot lot. My additional unit can be five hundred square feet, is that a maximum?
Yes, this was back when the state was pushing accessory dwelling units from like twenty-ten to twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen.
And now?
And they were writing the law where they were trying to accommodate really small. Studio SRO type units. Does that, uh, SB nine is now introducing a second unit where it can't be smaller than eight hundred square feet. So it's kinda conflicting with this part of it, and that's where I'm.
But it can be up to twelve hundred square feet.
Correct.
I don't even think about doing something like that in Taft, because of our. But I can certainly see where this would be helpful in Redondo Beach or Santa Monica. If you're a landowner, good lord.
So that's where, uh. When we dive deeper into it, and if I start getting some examples from other cities. I'm not sure if we're able to also, because there's uncertainty of. All these square feet limits that we've adopted, and this new bill is between these two. Are we violating the law by approving something like this, is it something we could still allow to give the flexibility to a property owner? That's what I'm thinking is the case, is everything will be listed, and, cause nothing is listed as prohibited in this new bill. Other than that eight hundred square foot level, but it doesn't reference the ADU allowances, other than. When you create the duplex, we don't have to approve additional ADUs on top of the duplex.
One of the things is though, that it only requires you to have one parking per dwelling.
Yes.
So I could ostensibly have a three unit residence, or three bit of a residence. And put an ancillary or ADU. And I would still be meeting the criteria if I just have two parking spaces. Where in the past, that would have required three.
Well, one thing we did is when we updated the ADU law. We're not requiring any additional parking, whatever they utilize here based on their property, we're not asking for additional lot, it's more of. Stay within this maximum threshold, comply with the building code. Uh, design is uh, consistent with the single family home and garage. Just so everything looks cohesive on that property design wise, now it's pretty much it. But now we have this duplex, eight hundred square foot minimum for each lot, potential lot split thing going on. In the same bill, and I don't know when we'll get something that, oh, uh. I have reached out to HCD and they said they didn't have anything for us at this time, they're uh, looking forward to cities. Figuring out how they modify their development standards to accommodate the bill, so, um. This is a discussion item, so we can continue to discuss it, uh, I can come back each successive meeting with. Little tweaks and changes to show you uh, the direction I'm going, where I think it can accommodate all of the above, if you will. Somebody who just wants the standard single family, single family plus ADU, duplex. Split it and maximize the two smaller lots now.
Does the parking on the road count towards your?
No, that, that's where.
To be all on that property?
They were trying to accommodate the cities that are really anti, don't tell us how much parking we can require. So that's why they still said one per unit, cause I know the state would love to say you can't require anything more. It's not specific about garage carport, so I think that discretion is up to us as well. Um, so you, you could put two single cars, or if maybe it's one of the properties that has street and alley access, they each have. Separate driveways to a covered space, a, a, attached carport that's integrated to the architecture. That's probably something we can.
I'm not.
Into the design standards.
I'm not sure of the square footage, but there's a type of, it's an apartment building, mind you. Um, in San Diego called a Huffman six, six pack. It's called that because Huffman was the guy that built a bunch of them.
Right.
Six units, either one or two bedroom, um, three parking spots.
The half.
That was it, only three, guess what happened?
Yeah, the streets.
The parking there is impossible.
So one thing here, the one thing is it will limit each lot to two units, so it's not. Going that more dense, but I know some people are gonna not like a potential empty lot, next to them maybe maximizing. What this bill looks like it's allowing.
So, I'm sorry, did they say what the smallest lot you can?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hun- that you can split?
But when you start at seven, eight thousand, you can only make one of them as small as forty percent of the original size. So we don't have a lot of small ones aside from what Chairman Orrin mentioned, which was. Uh, we do have the twenty-five by one twenty-five, which is just over three thousand square feet.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking what size the smallest existing lot can be?
Under our code?
No, I mean, under this deal, I mean, if it's a, if it's a twelve hundred square foot, um, existing lot, that means I can split it?
Uh, you have a what?
If I have a twelve hundred existing lot and I split it fifty-fifty.
No, because you have to do the math the other ways, they say that's the minimum, so.
So they're saying smallest lot will be twelve hundred.
However, you can't put a duplex on, or two unit, two dwelling units on it.
On a twelve hundred square foot, absolutely.
I own, I own a lot like.
There's four units there then.
That's where, we're, we're basically, uh, so zoning codes tended to not. Have too much uh, uh, design standard of things on single family, cause it'd be the one unit, stay within setbacks. Maximum lot coverage, have a garage, and then we did have these ADUs which added a little bit more square footage, but now. R two type zoning, which is duplexes, maybe smaller lots and things like that, are what's coming through this bill, it's. Instead of the state going, okay, cities, to produce more housing in your area. Let's maybe expand the amount of R two, R three zone areas to get more multifamily, it's. Bring two units to every single family lot in every city. That's the direction they've gone, to get more units built. To solve the housing crisis.
For a state with a declining population.
Us, that's what they say.
Well, it is declining population, but it's also something like a million houses short of its, where it should be in supply, so.
When we get into the uh, housing element, probably middle of next year, we'll get into the demographic data that talks about all that. And we'll see where we're at, and we can see statewide numbers and all that, current cog is. Calculating all that for all the cities, and we'll have a report that I'll present to you hopefully by July. So we could get into that nuanced part of it, but this bill is preceding all that. And um, by January first, we'll need to figure out something. But um, we don't have to absolutely approve something, we just would have to figure out how to. Approve an application that is compliant with the bill, uh, but we do need to work on this, and uh, hopefully I could get the. Uh, consultant on the zoning ordinance amendment part of the downtown plan.
One quick question.
Yeah.
If the lot we would consider now substandard. Has been split from another lot. So, people buy a lot of half lots around here, a lot and a half, et cetera, or a lot and a quarter. If you're left with that lot that is a half lot, twelve and a half feet wide. It meets the criteria for twelve hundred square feet.
Correct.
So we would need to allow uh, residents with a dwelling unit on it? And with an ADU?
That's something we could definitely amend the code to better explain those situations, there aren't a lot, but there's enough.
There are not a lot of them, I will grant you that.
Uh, but, uh, generally speaking. Um, if something is, if a property is a legal lot where. The, the boundaries of it, it's been recorded somehow, it's below the square footage of um. Whatever lot minimum we've put in place. So like we have all these minimum lot sizes, or an R one zone needs to be at least six thousand square feet. The typical fifty by a hundred and twenty-five foot lot around here is sixty-two fifty.
Right.
So, most of them comply, the half ones. I haven't had anybody submit plans for a unit yet, um, but it's a legal lot and I. I don't wanna assume here, but I believe there's some form of state law where when it comes to single family. We need, if it's a legal law, we need to figure out how to allow it, especially if there's no other option for acquiring more land. And I'm, and I don't try to push folks to get more land one way or the other, the few single homes we've had built in town. We've worked within the uh, con- uh, limits of the existing lot. Um, as some of you may know, or if not, this whole, the center part of town was chopped up into twenty-five by a hundred and twenty-five foot lots. Somewhere over the years, uh, one, two, or more lots were all. Combined into most of the parcels that we see today, and not much has changed since that happened, so. We do have a lot of exist- or a few existing lots that are narrow like that, and I would accommodate folks that would try to. Put. Uh, residential units on those lots because they're confined to that space. And not limit them to just having to sell it to one of the neighbors, and the neighbor would have to merge those lots. So the, there's more minute details we could go through in future meetings.
Yeah, we, we can, we can beat this to death with ideas.
And I, what I can do is, uh, in the additional edits we do, and get to another meeting. Uh, I can address the twenty-five foot wide lots. And how we can. Work this into the code, or what standards can be updated about the undersized lots. You do have the full um. Development standard section in the draft ordinance, so you could look at that as well, most of it's unaltered. There's some kinda obvious stuff that I've already done some strike through and underline on, so. You could look at that, but I, I'll definitely be bringing this back in December with more edits and hopefully refining it down, hopefully some initial. Direction from the state on uh, what they think the legislature was doing with this bill, and what the. Uh, end result in typical development standards would look like for it. Cause I, it, our, our existing standards are not that dissimilar from probably eighty percent of the state. You know, most don't have set small lot standards and all that kinda stuff, so, and with this added layer to the R one zone. There's four hundred plus cities that are changing their codes in the next couple of months to accommodate this, so. We'll just keep working on it, and if there's any changes, I'll bring it up in the next meetings. I don't think we'll be adopting anything in December, cause there's definitely a lot of changes to make, so. I'll try to get it as hundred percent as I can, and present it to the five of you. And we'll go through the next uh, series of. Questions and issues and edits that we might need to do, and hopefully we can have something to adopt by January. Questions and issues and edits that we might need to do, and hopefully we can have something to adopt by January. Um, and then if anything else comes up between now and then with. The other cities also having similar. Questions and issues and not sure which way to go with, uh, amending a typical, uh, uh, development standard chart like this. Um, I'll bring that up as well. Do what I can to summarize it better than I did today. So, uh, this is the start of this. I'll bring it back next meeting.
I heard about this coming.
Yes.
And, uh, was really taken aback by the process.
Yes.
Is it, but maybe it does suit a purpose.
It's certainly taken a lot of time to get through to here.
It was, well, it could keep you busy anyhow.
Full employment for planners. This is just, I don't need you to answer it, okay? But, um, I was looking at the off-street parking requirements, um.
Yes.
In the actual, uh, uh, bill. And for the most part, they look pretty, pretty straightforward until you get to the section that says. Um, off-street parking is up to one space per unit, except that a local agency shall not impose a parking requirement. In either of the following instances. And one of them has to do with a high quality transit corridor being within half a mile. What is a high quality transit corridor?
It is defined by the state and it is in this bill as well.
Oh, it is. I didn't even notice it.
From what I recall, I'll just answer the high transit corridor part of it, and we'll get into parking standards when I come back with the next edit. Um, the high level transit, I believe, is any kind of transit system that has a frequency of fifteen minutes or quicker.
Okay, so we only got.
That stops, so. Our dial-a-rider, even when we had our, um, routes, they were not that frequent. Um, and I'm, I'm thinking even get is kind of teetering on whether they're that frequent as well. But, you know, your major urban areas with the major transit systems. They have plenty of, uh, lines that are quicker than, uh, every fifteen minutes, but that's the high quality transit.
Rather than high quality, what they remain is high volume.
Correct.
Or high frequency.
Or high frequency, yeah.
And it, it's related to if you ever heard of, uh, the transit oriented development. The half corridor or half mile around stations trying to get that overly dense, and then it can kind of feather out beyond that. Uh, uh, this is all related to that as well. So, but as I mentioned at the very beginning, that whole urban cluster thing, any incorporated city bigger than twenty-five hundred people. Has to figure out how to comply with the, the bill's.
Maybe they misplaced the comma.
Yeah.
Who knows? Maybe it should be two hundred and fifty thousand people, but. Thank you. Okay, that moves us to. Item four. Which is the, uh, downtown specific plan workshop number two. That's in my notes to ask you, uh, Mr. Staples, you have a recommendation again?
Um, no recommendation here. It's just, uh, my promise of having a, uh, standing item to discuss the progress of the downtown specific plan. And today it's more to, um, just promote that we're having our next workshop, which will be in person one week from today. Five PM, Oil Dorado Room at the Transit Center. I know some folks, uh, thought there was gonna be some Zoom portion to this. I know, I'm sure in this room I've mentioned that, uh, workshop two or three might have been a hybrid. Part of that was due to, um, the consultant is mostly based out of the San Diego area. And if they were utilizing somewhat more stringent COVID requirements there, and they didn't wanna travel or. Part of their champ- team was gonna travel, the rest might be projected up on a screen kind of situation, so I. Was forewarning it might be hybrid, but it will be one hundred percent in person. So five PM, November tenth, at the Transit Center, and. So, uh, a number of folks should have received a postcard that looks like this. If not, they'll be getting it this week. Um, it's mostly the folks that own the property within the downtown area, and then a little bit of a buffer beyond the downtown area, so. All the information's here. Um, again, everybody's welcome, whether you own property in the downtown or not. Live and work downtown or not, or even if almost your entirety is outside of Taft as well, cause. Fort City residents, Taftites, South Taft, they're welcome to attend as well, cause they utilize the shops down there, the services and everything like that. We have plenty of, uh, uh, what you would call stakeholders that are based out of Bakersfield, potential home builders. Uh, the current Economic Development Corporation, you know, they sit on certain boards out here. So, um, we do want that variety of eyes and minds to, um, guide us on this, uh, workshop, so. All the information is here on the project website. I do need to get it reposted onto the city website, cause, uh, the old link went to that map. We played with last time, if you remember that. So I do need to get this link, um, up to the city website, but feel free to share it with folks. And then again, um. Go to the homepage here. Uh, there. Feel free to direct, uh, folks to me. Um, whether they're attending, or even if they're not, they can just share their comments with me, and I could get it to our consultant. Um, they could look at the, uh, items that are, uh, on the project website under workshop one, or the project background. Or any of the other materials that are here on the site. They're welcome to reach out to me. The map is still there, but it's static now. You can't really add any of the opportunities or constraints. They took that info to help guide, uh, next Wednesday's, uh, uh, workshop. Anybody else who wants the email updates, please click here. It's just first, last name, email, that's it. No phone numbers, where you live, any of that stuff, so anybody who just wants to keep tabs on it, please share that with them. And then, um, this is also a, um, feature here where people could just use this as a comment thing. And it goes to a email and comment dump that we have monitored. So when people have whatever statements about one thing or the other, they could do it here as well. Um, and then all my contact info is here at the bottom, if anybody needs it, email and my direct line. So we want people to be there. We don't want people to give comments after the fact, but we do, but. We'd rather have you there, um, share your thoughts and ideas with us. We wanna know how intense and what types of uses to, um, encourage our developers to build along rails of trails. The infill that's needed on Center North and Kern Street. Uh, we definitely, uh, need everybody's guidance, so. Uh, please share this with as many people as you can.
All right. Thank you. That concludes item four. Uh, Mr. Staples, you again for the planning director report.
Uh, the only thing I'll bring up is, uh, we had a really successful Oil Dorado. Um, there is a planning component to it that takes all the departments of the city, from the city manager to police department all the way down. Know to find the other, uh, emergency services with Kern County, uh, fire, um, and sheriff. Um, and it seems like most everything went out, went off without a hitch. Um, I think we got a lot of, uh, um, visitors from out of town, whether it's, uh, people who've moved away or just. You know, friends and other folks that, uh, haven't attended an Oil Dorado before. And I enjoyed being in the parade. It was great when the, the flyover happened during it. That was unexpected. Um, and then everything went smoothly at the, um, the event center that they had set up, as far as I knew. From the store to the comedy show and concerts that seemed to, uh, really go off well. Had a really good mayor's luncheon. Um, I missed the civic luncheon, which was the bigger of the two. Um, but it seemed like everything went well, so. And that's all I have for my, uh, director's report.
All right, thank you. Mr. Epperson?
Thank you. No report, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Uh, commissioner comments? Wanna start?
Uh, I have none.
No, you have none? Kathy, none?
None.
None? You're kidding. I don't either. So that brings us to a position where we should identify a representative. Jerry?
I'm always willing to do it. You can always count on that.
And then, uh, that would conclude item eight, and we're looking for an adjournment, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor? Aye, opposed? None, it carries on. My vote. We are adjourned.